We stand to declare the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold on please.
Alderwoman Claycon, here. Alderwoman Johnson, here. Alderman Donovan, here. Alderman Jokers, here.
Alderman Iddman, here. Alderman Rainey, here. Alderman Prince, here. Alderwoman Armbruster, here.
Here, we have a call.
Very good, thank you. Move for approval of the agenda?
Move through.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty, takes us down to our city administrators' report.
You've got the report at your seat. Did not get that done before Monday, um, so you... I know, heartbreaking. Uh, one thing I'll, uh, I will pass on to you that, uh, we had an online webinar yesterday with Mo D and R on their ARBA money and what they'll be distributing, uh, for water, sewer, stormwater, um, and lead line services. I will tell you that we are not eligible for stormwater. So, if we had hoped to match some money for planning, because we're not an MS four district, or an MS four community, and we don't have a combined sewer or stormwater, we're not eligible. So, we can still do water sewer, we'll look at those projects, but for stormwater, we're not gonna get, not look at trying to apply, 'cause we won't be eligible. So, just thought I'd pass that on. Um, construction project's gonna get underway here soon. Monday, they'll start on Parkwood. End of the month, they'll start on the water line on North Fourth Street, so it's gonna be a busy summer, again. Uh, should take a couple of weeks on Parkwood, about two months on the water line to get it dug out, installed, and then repaid. And then we'll have bulwarks come in after that and do the paving across town, uh, different streets. And also we'll have, uh, Seventh Street as well to do a water line. So, that'll be coming up probably, eh, after school, so, June, do that install.
On Parkwood, there's always gonna be access to those streets?
Oh, you mean the side streets?
Yeah, side streets, and why you got those apartments for the elders?
So, what you look at is, it's only gonna be those two panels on the east side, and then you can always do half the, half the intersection, so people can get in and out. Do half, let the concrete cure, and then you do the other half. Uh, so, CE's done this type of work before, they'll, they're good at it, they know what they're doing.
What kind of year they need that?
I, nah, only if they use the high early. I don't think they're gonna use that type of concrete. So, we're probably looking at seven days.
Seven days, yeah, could be cool.
Yeah, see if we get a compressive strength of about four thousand, four thousand pounds.
What about the North Fourth? Is that gonna be an issue for residents to access who live on North Fourth? I know we had a little bit of an issue last year.
Uh, and, I mean, it's gonna be minor issues all the time. I mean, there's no way to avoid some of it. Uh, but, and one of the things we talked about is, is running a detour, so they can close that, close sections of it for a time. But they'll always leave it open for residents. It's just that they may have, you know, may have to either wait, or have to work their way around some signs to get to their, to their homes. I don't remember there being any, any consistent problems where people couldn't get in and out. It was just, depends on if they were working in front of those houses or not.
But we're communicating with them when, when that work's gonna start?
That's up to the contractor, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Happy on Parkwood, could we get some signs, or some temporary signs to kinda limit truck traffic on there while it is gearing, 'cause there is some truck traffic, you know, ends up on that road at times. I think it would, might be to our best interest to kinda limit that, you know, until the engineer says it's fully geared.
I would, we'll see. I would think the CE would block it completely, and so there's no access. Uh, so nobody's driving over it, so unless they run over the signs, uh, or the barricades...
Right, no, I mean, after that point, you know, from vehicles to eighty thousand pound trucks is a big difference.
But I think if you open it up, you know, putting a sign up isn't gonna stop anybody. I mean, they're not gonna, they're not gonna avoid it, and they're not gonna know what to avoid, so, yeah. Anything else? Any other questions? Okay, that's it.
Very good. Takes us to our staff reports, Kenny.
Good evening everyone, should have a report in front of you.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd like to start off by welcoming our new board member, this is my first appearance in front of you, and also offer, like I do all the other aldermen, that we're out there every Wednesday night, if you'd like to stop by and take a tour of the facility, and we'll show you around, tell you what we have, and explain things to you if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Any questions about my report? Uh, I will say something about the roof repairs. Uh, we did have three people come in and give us estimates, and what we did was we took their estimates and combined them to what we thought was a good spec. So, that's how we came up with the spec. And whenever we got the specs put together and we went out for bids, I also sent emails out to the companies that gave us prior estimates, and got no response from one. The others said they were gonna come and look at it, and never did. And we ended up with just the one. But we do feel that that one is a good comprehensive plan, 'cause we added some things from the other ones that wasn't in the original. So, we recommend an approval, so we can get that thing started and get the roof taken care of.
Amen, that'd be awesome.
Did they give you an estimate when they could start?
I, I haven't called them yet, 'cause I didn't wanna lead into that we had given them the bid or anything at that point. I would anticipate shortly, but with construction being the way it is, it's hard to say. And they are the ones that did the work, or are doing work on St. Genevieve School District, so they're a well-known company.
Oh, yeah. And usually in the summer, they have, they're busy with schools, 'cause they have to get all that done before school starts again. So, that may put it off a little bit.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Bring David up.
Good evening.
Evening.
Got my report there, you can see the next Heritage Commission meeting will be Monday. Uh, just a note on the building department, that demo permit that takes all of the homes that were unfortunately destroyed by fire last year, they're all addressed at this point. Under the comprehensive plan, I just wanted to note that, um, just gave P and Z an update. Uh, they are completing the, they have completed the land use survey, and are reviewing the current comp plan demographic data, and will be scheduling some public outreach meetings in June or July, which is part of that, uh, agenda we shared a few months back. Besides that, certainly had an uptick in nuisance complaints, um, but a lot, most of that was vegetation. Um, of the fourteen you see that letters went out last week, nine have been mowed. So, I think the, the rain, and then the quick sunshine brought a lot of grass really quickly. And, uh, most of them are addressed now, though. There's a few more each day, unfortunately. That's all I got.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Jeff.
Good evening.
Evening.
So you can see in the report there, we've got several things that are going on in and around the, the area, including the Living History Saturdays are underway, that's an ongoing event. Uh, they'll be running, uh, each Saturday, all the way through month of September. Uh, some of our most recent events, good turnout for those. Uh, one of those, a follow-up to the STG gravel classic that was conducted on April ninth, where we had four hundred seventeen participants in that event. Um, we had an opportunity to meet with, uh, event organizers, and some area merchants, and other representatives for, around the area. Uh, that was very, very, uh, optimistic, that, uh, so many people showed up and for, for a meeting to discuss, uh, what we can do going forward on this event. Um, the one-day economic impact number that was shared with us for the, uh, for the event, and this is specifically for the riders and the staff members alone, with a forty-five thousand dollar plus impact one day on the city. Um, some of the area retailers, one of the things that we had hoped to achieve with that particular event was, uh, was residual tourism as a result of having the event. Already, we've had some reports from retailers, um, museums, and a number of other entities that said that they've had people already coming back that were specifically because of the event, that they'd never been to St. Genevieve before, but have already returned. Uh, no date has been set, of course, for 2023, but, uh, they're looking at, at options, but, uh, they would like to propose at some point in time, somewhere in that same vicinity, that time of the year for, for next year. Uh, tours and groups, uh, being a little more active. Some of those, uh, already taking place in, uh, April and May. Uh, three are scheduled, still yet to go this month. I had a good group of forty, about forty-five plus, uh, in town today. Uh, also, uh, been reaching out to some tour directors and, uh, tour owners in, specifically Nashville, Tennessee. And so, we've already had some of the, um, directors that actually came here to St. Genevieve to look around, see if this was a, an opportunity where they might develop a new tour. Uh, there are some stops that are being looked at, where we'd be part of a, uh, an ongoing tour across Missouri from that, that area. So, uh, they were in town actually today to discuss, uh, some particulars and see for themselves. And so, they're already looking at some, uh, additional tours, and some of those where we would be the primary destination going forward, where they would, instead of been spending three to four hours, they'd actually be spending two or three days. Um, the state level, uh, marketing grant has been announced that, uh, will be reverting to a fifty percent reimbursement, as opposed to the seventy-five percent that we enjoyed tonight, in the last year. Visitors are slightly up at, uh, the Welcome Center. Um, also, uh, thanks to all the folks who're doing a lot of hard work down there, hot as it is. Uh, thanks to mulch went in this morning, uh, some of the overgrowth, vines, bushes, trees, everything's been removed, starting to clean up, looking good, obviously for, uh, uh, Garden Walk that's coming up this weekend, along with other things. Uh, National Park, uh, thank goodness, we had no incident when, I'm happy to report that, uh, when we moved the diorama, that was, that was fantastic, that we had a lot of manpower to help with that. Uh, and also, uh, the repainting and, uh, that will be, repainting of the interior is scheduled to come, because they were trying to match some paint inside. Uh, but, you know, forty-year-old paint doesn't match very well, so, uh, so they're gonna do a repaint job there, and we're gonna install a TV monitor behind the new, uh, kiosk for tourism there in the corner. Um, social media, still growing very well, uh, very solid. Uh, especially proud of the, uh, post-reach numbers, so those continue to increase. And a few upcoming events to take note of, of course, I mentioned the Master Gardener's Garden Walk coming up this weekend, as well as Pioneer Days, that'll also be happening, uh, both of those on the fourteenth. Uh, Garden Walk will also be on the fifteenth. Uh, Missouri Tourism Roadshow, that was rescheduled from, I believe, February, uh, will be here on February, or rather, May twenty-fourth, over at the Community Center. And of course, the Fourth Roundy Art Walk is coming up on the twenty-seventh.
We could be cleaning up on the overgrowth, the vines and trees, whatever.
That was Alliance, it was, I'm happy to schedule some of that, and it's been kind of ongoing process of, from some of the overgrowth to what they were putting in the mulch.
What's our staff level on the Tourism Welcome Center? Do we have, what is our, how many staffs you got?
It's myself and one part-timers.
One?
One.
What's that one-day, uh, economic impact, that forty-five thousand, uh, where does that number come from? You said it was shared with you.
That was shared with me from the, uh, from the organizers of the event. And that's based on the, uh, Missouri average for expenditure, uh, expenditure for per person each day in the state of Missouri. So, yeah. Any questions?
Thank you, Jeff.
Good.
Thank you.
Are there any, any committee reports?
Not this week.
Alright.
Hey, uh...
Yes, sir?
Not, not this week, so I'm gonna try to put you on the hook here. Did we, uh, did we get follow-up on a work order on that, that bathroom, the hole in the wall? Did we, did we complete a work order to repair that? Does anybody know?
What's the question?
Bathroom in the parks where there was a hole in the wall, did we complete a work order to repair that?
I don't know that we have a work order on that, no.
Okay, rephrase the question, can we get a work order?
Yeah, we didn't put in a formal thing with it. It's been there for X amount of years, not to put it off, but...
Right. Well, what if we, what if we decided tonight we wanted to fix that? Can we do it? How, how long would it take? Is it possible? Can we fix that, that hole in the wall in the bathrooms up there in the park?
I sent Stephen Oden on that, so I just don't think it's been scheduled yet.
Okay, alright, so it's in progress?
Yeah.
Okay.
There we go.
That's all I wanted to know.
Thank you. Takes us to, uh, if there's other committee reports, we'll go to public comments. Deana, please come to the podium.
Hello.
Hello.
Um, Deana Cryler, Chief of Department of Commerce Director. I just wanted to, um, say thank you to, um, Happy and your admin staff for hosting us for our leadership, uh, group that we had here, well, I guess what was that, in April? Um, your department heads all did a great job, and the group was very happy with, uh, the tour and also the presentation. Um, I also want to say that we're gonna get to do, uh, I think in July, we're at the Firehouse, um, as well for a tour for Emergency Management Day. And then, uh, in September, we're really looking forward to, uh, the Park Board. So, we're gonna be doing, um, I got some strong, strong gentlemen in this group, so we're gonna put them to work, uh, in September to do, um, I think it's Valley Springs, a project there. So, just to let you know that we do appreciate you guys, um, giving us your time, 'cause I know it was very, it's very stretched, so I do appreciate that. So, we are looking forward to the next couple of months to getting into some other department heads, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Deana. And just so you know, this is the time that we would have heard people, if they had questions about redistricting, we had advertised for it, we put it on the Facebook page, we put the information out there. But, uh, we don't have anybody that has any questions. So, I think we fulfilled that requirement or request of the board.
Are there any other, any, any other public comments? Very good.
Very good.
Takes us to the consent agenda.
I've got some questions about the street closure request for the Oktoberfest. Kara, do you think you could answer a few questions for me?
Maybe.
Okay. So, um, I, I have gotten some inquiries about the event, so I'm probably gonna go a little beyond the scope of your request, if that's alright. So, you have it listed as organization SG Oktoberfest. Have you formed an actual organization?
So, we're, I mean, we're just a committee. We, our plan is, after this year, to use the money that we have from the t-shirt sales and stuff this year to do a nonprofit for next year.
Okay, because you're not currently...
We, yeah, we didn't have, there wasn't enough time, basically, to do all the nonprofit stuff and pull off an event this year, both, so...
So, what, what are, how are you handling insurance, liquor license, those types of things?
So, we are, we are putting out bids for insurance. We just, um, went to Walps and Farm Bureau and, um, Lakenin. Um, and then somebody else was looking at it a couple of different places, too. So, we will have, I mean, we, we have that in our funding for us to be able to do that. We are, um, so, we have, I mean, we have a whole marketing plan as far as what we're getting, where we're getting money from, and what their benefits are from doing that, and being involved in the parade, and all of those things. So, we're pretty confident that we'll have the money that we need to do everything we need. We are, we have over, almost four thou, four thousand dollars at this moment. Um, and that's from our sponsorships and stuff like that. And, um, as far as liquor license go, so that's what I, the conversation I had with Happy, is that we would put one beer garden on the street between Merchant and Market, and it would be closed off for that actual beer garden, and there would be music and games on the, on each end of it, is the idea at this moment. When we see how many vendors and things we get, that may have to be adapted, but that's where, that's kind of the plan for right now.
And so, whose liquor license will you be using?
Everybody will be doing their own. Like, it will be their catering liquor license. So, we're, um, it's like Jackson Street Brewery down in Ca, in Perryville, they would file their own catering license for themselves to have it there.
Okay. So, how does that work with us?
That'll be coming to you in the future...
Right.
Uh, to, to allow them to do that. At this point, they haven't made applications, so...
Okay, because on the agenda, it says alcohol sales on Main Street?
What you're approving is alcohol sales on Main Street.
Okay.
So, what Kara was looking for was approval from the board for their insurance purposes, saying that we are allowing it on the street, as opposed to on, uh, Lions Club Park, where they own that, or at Audubon's, where they own that property. So, this is public property, and they're looking for approval to be able to establish...
And because then, they, for them to get their catering license, they have to have approval of the property in order to then get a liquor, a liquor license for the day.
Yep.
So, specifics with follow-up?
Correct.
Right, right. You're not approving anybody to do it, you're just approving that it can be, that you can have a beer garden blocked off and properly fenced and whatever, on Main Street.
And so, we'll get those details in a festival application later?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, it's also a little unusual to have a street closure request that's not specific, so I'm just sort of wondering...
It was Main Street from Merchant to Washington.
As of now, maybe more in future.
Correct, 'cause it's depending on how many vendors we get coming in. And so, I mean, it's, the, the event is growing. Every week, we're getting more and more vendors. So, I, I mean, I don't, I don't want to narrow us into this only one area and then have to turn down vendors, so...
It says Market to, it says Market to Washington, I mean...
Yeah, sorry, that's what I meant, did I say Merchant?
Yeah, Merchant.
Market to Washington, yes. So, it, it may grow and grow up Merchant or Market Street, would, would be the areas we would grow. Um, but, I can't, I mean, I don't, our plan is, so, we have a Lion, we have the Lions Club, who is hopefully gonna do food and beer. They haven't for sure said that yet. Um, if you've ever been to an Oktoberfest, it's basically a big, ongoing beer garden. So, we're not quite able to do that, but we have the beer and food there, walk down to Main Street, and then we have our beer and food there that's, like, public, and then Audubon's will have their beer and food. So, it'll be almost a continuous kind of beer garden. And then after, Audubon's parking lot down is where the vendors will start, so...
So, then you would put in an amended request at some point, if you wanna...
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Is this Thursday night, Friday and Saturday?
No, it's a Friday, Saturday. It's just a Saturday and Sunday.
Fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
So, it should just be the night...
Since fifteen, seven PM, to the seventeenth, at six PM.
Yeah, wow. Sorry. I had Mother's Day this past weekend, um, at Audubon, and just wasn't prepared for that to be crazy, so, so it should be that Friday night at seven PM for them to start setting up.
Okay.
And then it'll be a close Saturday and Sunday.
But still access for residents to come and go that weekend?
I mean, it's, I, it's whatever Jordan Fett does, so, I mean, that's, I think that's what we would request, so it would be minimal. There's not a whole lot of residents in that area, um, but, I'm, obviously, we're not gonna tell somebody they can't go to their own house, so...
Well, then there's fire codes, too, that they have to abide by, so that the traffic couldn't be through, so...
Right, right.
You have a plan, anyway, right?
We, yeah. So far, it's been working. We've got twenty-two booths at this moment, um, so... Oktoberfest start in September.
And you have a plan to communicate with residents?
We have, we, we did, we finalized a letter Tuesday night that should be going out to all the residents.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's just a pretty long closure.
I mean, it's comparable to what Jordan Fett is, so...
Right, right. But that's, I mean, that's been an ongoing, that, that's sometimes an issue, too, I believe, that way.
Sure, sure.
Especially for new residents, who don't necessarily know this is the way it's always been.
Sure.
So, it's nice to communicate with the residents.
Yeah, there's, I mean, that's part of the application, is that we have to contact the area, so, um, we went through all that. We're meeting every three weeks, basically, from now until the event, um, to get everything organized and put off, so...
Well, ninety-three, we didn't have your consent, so we had a deal going in October that year, if you remember.
That was on the square, wasn't it?
Uh, it was pretty minimal, it wasn't very big, I remember that.
I remember it clearly.
Yeah, and we had it a couple of years, with my recollection.
We've, we've gotten really great traction. I mean, I think it's gonna end up being a pretty great event, so...
For his family, this town, it's really good.
Yes.
Yeah.
Can we get input from both of the chiefs while they're here? Or is that, is now not the time for that, or...
Well, they've approved, the police department has already approved it. The chief, you know, he goes, our chief, they, same way with Jordan Fett, I'm sure, so...
If, if I can for just a second, uh, the fire department's official stance is, we're not opposed to closing streets, we just have to have enough room to get our trucks through there, so I need an eight-foot minimum clearance down the center of the road. So, if we have vendors on either side, we need to have some room in the middle, so we can get a truck through there. Because we have to be within a hundred and fifty foot of the house, or something that burns, to get our hoses off and get into the building. So, we're not opposed to closing, we just need to make sure we have room. And that's one of the problems we've had with Jordan Fett for the years, is they go from one side to the other side, and twist and turn, and islands, and it's...
Our plan is to put everybody on the east side of Main Street, so...
We'd be fine with that, as long as we have enough room to get a truck through.
Yeah.
We're gonna, 'cause part of that is, we plan to have our Volkswagen parade, so we're putting all the vendors on one side of the street, so the parade can come through, so...
You got it.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Kara.
For me? Well, Bobby's gonna make a motion.
Need a motion?
For the consent agenda.
Oh, I make a motion to approve the consent.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Takes us to old business. Second reading of Bill number forty-four ninety, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve for the fiscal year 2022 budget relating to various revenue and expenditure increases.
Move through.
Second.
For a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Claycon?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yeah.
Alderman Iddman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Yes.
We have eight yes votes. Bill number forty-four ninety now becomes ordinance number forty-four twelve.
Thank you. Uh, second reading of Bill number forty-four ninety-one, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, amending the personnel manual as set forth below.
Move through.
Second.
For a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Claycon?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Iddman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Yes.
Eight yes votes. Bill number forty-four ninety-one now becomes ordinance number forty-four thirteen.
Very good. Takes us to new business, approval of the annual liquor license renewals.
These are all scrutinized by the police chief, right?
I guess, I...
Aren't they? Chief Bennett?
They give us an annual rundown, if we have any specific issues with any vendors, we'd be giving that as well, but, yeah, we'll have to...
Thank you.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, thank you. Takes us to first reading of Bill number forty-four ninety-two, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, amending Schedule Three Parking Restrictions Table Three, E. Handicap Parking as Set Forth Below.
What was your request? Was it, uh, individual came forward to make this request?
Oh, that's the individual?
Mayor?
Yes, it was, no, what's happening is, is there's, the board issues, go through the motion to, to get somebody a handicap parking spot. Well, it's issued to that, to that individual, the way I understand it. So, the house is sitting there, it's just, there's two of them right here on Market Street, well, the people have moved away. So, there's two, two handicap parking spots out there that nobody's using, right across from Valley School.
So, is it actually issued to the individual, or to the address?
It's the address.
The address.
Yeah, so we're eliminating it from the addresses that you see, see below.
Yeah.
Oh.
Motion to approve?
Good idea.
And Valley, sorry, Valley doesn't need those parking spaces for their, or...
No, it's on the, uh, it's on the other side that you cross from Valley. I, parking is always, it probably, it'd be beneficial for Valley to, to have them, they, they would be able to park out there, too. And both of those residents there have off-street parking, too, so...
Sorry for interrupting.
Oh, it's okay.
I don't know.
And if Valley needed a handicap spot, they would have to come to the board and apply, so... This is just eliminating the...
It's a residential, or...
Yeah, well, on the side there, right.
I have a motion in a second, don't I?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, you got that down? Okay. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, it takes us to, uh, Bill number forty-four ninety-three, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to accept a contract proposal with, uh, Miners Hagen Roofing and Sheet Metal LLC of Farmington, Missouri, for the Firehouse Roof Repair Project in the amount of eleven thousand and four hundred dollars.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second reading of Bill number forty-four ninety-three, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to accept a contract proposal with Miners, Miners Hagen Roofing and Sheet Metal LLC of Farmington, Missouri, for the Firehouse Roof Repair Project, the amount of... for the Firehouse Roof Repair Project, the amount of, in the amount of eleven thousand and four hundred dollars.
Motion to approve, second.
For a roll call, please?
Alderwoman Clayhorn?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster? Eight yes votes. Bill number forty-four ninety-three now becomes ordinance number forty-four fourteen.
Thank you. So, takes us to Bill number forty-four ninety-four, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to sign a special warranty deed to transfer ownership of fifty-nine point six zero acres along Progress Parkway to the St. Genevieve Catholic, St. Genevieve County Catholic Church Real Estate Corporation.
Happy, I have a question about this. So, how does it take place that they give us their property?
They'll have their own special warranty deed that will, that they'll sign off on, that we'll sign off as well. It'll match what you actually have in front of you.
Right.
Uh, we, we coordinated with them, and that was where we copied that special warranty from.
Uh, motion to approve?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading of Bill number forty-four ninety-four?
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
So, I have all in favor of that, aye?
Aye.
Second reading of Bill number forty-four ninety-four, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to sign a special warranty deed to transfer ownership of fifty-nine point six zero acres along Progress Parkway to the St. Genevieve County Catholic Church Real Estate Corporation.
Move through.
Second.
Roll call, please?
Alderwoman Clayhorn?
Yes.
Alderwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Eidman?
Yes.
Alderman Rainey?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderwoman Armbruster?
Yes.
Eight yes votes. Bill number forty-four ninety-four now becomes ordinance number forty-four fourteen.
Thank you. Is there any other business? If there's no other business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.